Which way is on?
Yeah, I think all you guys' mics are off, by the way. Just because they're doing interviews all day.
Do yours on?
Yes, please.
On is the simple line down.
I wish it was just like green and red.
This thing.
It would be better back to me, too.
Green and red doesn't do me any good. Yep. Alright, it's, uh, what time is it, Miles? Six oh one or something like that? Yep, we're gonna call a meeting of the Bath Planning Commission order. It's February the eleventh.
So that starts on six oh one.
Ray, you said you had an item you wanted to add to the agenda?
I amend the agenda to include introduction for our new planning commission member.
Is there a second?
Support.
Where's that at? Where's the thought at?
That's three point five.
So the first item.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll move forward the modification of the agenda.
So approval of the agenda.
So Brett, you're on. Tell us about yourself.
No, 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 don't ask. It's disclosure of conflicts of interest.
Then three point five.
Oh, is it?
Gotta attend to details here.
Okay, alright, okay. I was wondering, put it in between. Okay, that's fine. Anybody have a disclosure of interest? None? Hearing none? We'll move forward. Go ahead Brett, thank you.
Thanks, thanks John.
You're welcome.
Just, uh, my name's Brett Coulter. Um, I'm a geologist. I work for the state of Michigan. Eagle. Worked for them for about twelve years, so I do, enforcement of rules and regulations for part one fifteen, which are related to solid waste and landfills. Um, I've worked in the environmental field for over twenty-five years now. My education background is in hydrogeology and geology. And happy to be here, appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Welcome to planning commission. We decided to have you. We happen to have an unlicensed transfer facility.
I think I know where that is.
We had, looks like we have another new person, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, when we get to department updates, we're gonna kind of introduce them, if that's okay with the planning commission.
Any general public comments? Judy, I see you're here.
Good evening. My name is Judy Gardi and I chair the senior services advisory for Bath Township. I greatly appreciate this analysis that Jason and Miles put together on a way to really move forward on the question of parking studies. Do we have enough space on the campus to add additional parking around the senior center? I think that this is well thought out and it makes good sense and I completely support it. Thank you. If I can help, if you have any help in your discussions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thanks Judy. Minutes of January the fourteenth. Everybody have a chance to look them over? Is there anything you want to change, modify, add?
I'll move to accept the minutes as written for January fourteenth.
For a second, thank you. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of January twenty-eighth.
I have commentary, but no request for changes.
Okay.
So my read of the minutes, I, was that they were rather generalized. I, and one of the things that is useful about minutes is that in the future, as people try to reconstruct the nature of a meeting and what was discussed and what was sort of the flow and where the planning commission was landing, is to be able to recreate that from the minutes. And, and while I understand why some of the things were generalized, I don't know if we're doing a service to the future of people trying to make sense of the rationale and behind the decisions that we've made.
Is there not also a video?
The videos aren't preserved after a period of time. And so.
Or they get kicked off YouTube?
Yeah.
Well, they're not archived?
Not long term. I, I'm speaking based on a historical memory of, of this.
I mean, I, I don't know, I guess I haven't been here, we haven't been talking long enough for me to know. Everything's been, at least in my time here, has been saved and I assume will be archived. But that could in theory change. But we're just, we're always trying to walk that fine line between keeping it general and being too specific. So I guess I'll just get with you offline and figure out where we can be more specific.
Well, I, I, again, I think it's, it's an art, right? So, and so I, I don't know if I could give you, you know, concrete answers that wouldn't vary over time. But, I mean, just keep in mind that someone, maybe a future planning commission member, just trying to recreate what exactly was discussed in this meeting that would underlie futures decisions.
A hundred percent, okay.
Okay, following up on that a little bit, what Jason's saying, there were a couple of things I think just left out. One was that we did discuss sidewalks. We discussed other things that were specific, that we may want to talk about again before we approve or deny this thing. But sidewalk is one thing we talked about. Street trees is another. Public versus private streets. So I, I think it's key to have some of that kind of detail in our minutes to know what we talked about, not just that we talked about general things.
Okay.
A couple of specifics on, on Gary Lane, on number seven, V one.
Yeah.
And also the same comment on X two, the ten, twelve. Where it says, uh, master of deeds. That should be master deed.
Master deed, yeah.
Just master deed. And on thirteen, I believe when I made the motion to table it, there was no timing to put on that. It wasn't until this meeting, it was just.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, it was just to table it.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, those are two concrete errors.
Kami was unsure when they could get back to us with information, so.
Yeah.
But it's.
Well, we can amend with edits, however you guys want to do it, or we can bring it back.
Uh, whatever. What's the general feeling?
My thought is that, I mean, this isn't gonna come back. You know, most of these issues are gonna come back before us, and so I wouldn't waste the time to amend these minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I get approval for the minutes then, with modifications?
Move to approve without modifications?
Oh, I think we need to put the two things in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two specifics. The general stuff, no.
Okay. Support?
Yeah.
Who made the motion?
Move with modifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's move on. Brett, oh, any communications, Miles?
None at this time.
None? Okay, thank you. Old business, the senior center. And you said you had a pass out for this?
Yeah, so let me go ahead and, uh, think of them up here. If anyone takes one, I know someone already have one. Just, if you do, just pass it down.
Just one page?
Yeah, just one page. So, um, I'll kick it off. Me and Commissioner Almeridge had a meeting last week Wednesday to kind of just work together as we're trying to do with the planning commission more. Uh, the second item, for example, out tonight, we also have a working group for that item. I'll continue to work with Commissioner Almeridge if he's willing to do so as we move through this, because I think it's just good to play to people's strength, just like I'll continue to work with Commissioner Severie when we talk about anything engineering related, because he's our in-house engineer. So, uh, we talked about a number of strategies on how to do this. We included a memo and used the packet tonight that, I think there's mirrors of our memo and what's here. I do tend to like this format better, just because I think it's cleaner. So I do appreciate Commissioner Almeridge for putting this together. Basically, I am just, tonight to bring this in front of you guys, is we've got a lot of data in the works and it doesn't seem like that from this packet, but I know Commissioner Almeridge saw some of the legwork that we've been putting in to gather that. A lot of that is just digitizing records that were on paper right now, so, you know, that's a heavy lifting of itself. We've mostly concluded the digitization of records and now we need to know what to do with all that information. So before we put in like another twenty hours of labor, we wanted to make sure we're headed down the right path. I would hate to do that and then come here and then be like, oh no, do this completely differently. So that's the impetus. Um, I don't know if Chair, you want to kick it to Commissioner Almeridge to tell us, you know, what we're looking at here, since he kind of came up with it, if that's okay with you, Jason?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, he's our data man, so.
Well, I think we're all our data people. Um, so, at first I just want to clarify that there's two separate things here. I had promised Miles to give him something on Wednesday prior to the packet going out, and I failed to meet that promise, and so he picked up the slack and got something in the packet, so. And then this came out yesterday, I think. Uh, so, so it's just management of time and all that kind of stuff. So I appreciate Miles in keeping the pace going. And so this really is just a, a simple framework for us to have a discussion about what to do with the data that we have available. Um, and so, none of this is, I mean, again, it's discussion. So add, deletes, let's have a conversation about it. And so, um, so you can see here, we have the goal challenges. I just shared one challenge, there's probably many more challenges to this. And then analysis plan. The goal is, you know, we as a planning commission, have been asked to do a specific thing. And that is to look at parking. And that parking is in service of a potential expansion of the senior center, which is brought a question as to, um, do we have enough parking spaces to handle more customers, et cetera? That's our purview. But if we look at that purview, you know, there's some opportunities here that can benefit. One is, let's take a close look at things so that we have a really good data foundation to make series of recommendations to the township board. Um, but as we're looking at the data, could we also support the township in other ways? In terms of having insight as to what, um, you know, kind of services we're providing? I actually do have. And Miles, are you okay if I share some of the analyses I did of the meals? I'll share, in a second, I'll share some preliminary data analysis that I was able to do with, uh, what meals, how many meals have been delivered within an eleven month period last year.
I can pull that up too.
Yeah.
Although one of those on your email.
Yeah, no, that, that would be awesome. I think, I think there'll be some real excitement generated based on that.
It's thrilling.
I think, I honestly like. You know, when we talk about meatloaf and Swiss steak, uh, you know, we're all gonna get excited. Mark here is probably gonna get really excited. Um, and Judy, I.
I'm having Swiss steak on Friday, I think I'm gonna.
The data suggests we should all go. So, analysis plan. I think there's four steps here. One is, I, what is our baseline usage? And so there's two forms here. There's how many people do we serve? Um, and then, uh, unique individuals. And I would suggest that we look at that not only by, um, how many unique individuals, but how many, you know, come from the same household, might they be driving together? You know, because keeping an eye on, um, we know that people, I, 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 maybe driving separately, time conflicts, all that kind of stuff. Um, and so, I, there is data there. I think there's like a, a emergency contact form that gives us some of that. And that's collected, I think, at a one, one point in time when they begin utilization of the services. I think that's gonna give us a rich understanding of who we serve throughout our township. In terms of unique individuals, not, beyond that, there's day by day. So, you know, when we do have, the senior services provides a variety of different services. I think we're focused mostly at the meal times, because that's when we get the greatest traffic. I would ask Judy or the senior services center to clarify if that's not the case. Um, but assuming that's the case, then we do have some data. And so, uh, the senior center tracks how many meals that they, like total meals delivered, uh, and then, uh, how many to-go meals. And so we can break that out in terms of in-person versus to-go. And, and that will, Miles will show some of those preliminary analyses to just see the extent of those meals. And then, might there be, because we have a shared parking lot, I, we may want to have a sense of during those noon time periods when lunches are delivered, what's the probability of, uh, other events or facility operations drawing in people who would be utilizing those spaces? And so things like the police department's township offices. My sense is that there may not be a lot of co-facility or co-event parking that's needed, but it's something to keep in mind. And then, I, during the high periods, and I've got some estimates as, or baselines as to what we would call a typical busy day or a typical very busy day. What is the total campus parking space utilization? And I think that might be some, uh, maybe a couple of planning commission members doing some observations on Swiss steak day or meatloaf day, as the data indicate that those would be uh, some of the higher probability, uh, or higher utilizations. And then, you know, and, and assessment of in-person versus to-go. I think there's some observations there in terms of what's the traffic flow within the parking lot? For those to-go meals and might, might there be some optimization that we can do for that traffic flow? So that's step one, baseline, establish baseline usage. Step two, I, we've got two pieces here. One is that the elderly population of Bath may be growing. And so I think we can look at some census statistics to see what that might be. But if the senior center is proposing a two thousand square foot addition, would that, uh, uh, come with additional outreach to seniors across the community? Uh, what, I, you know, what will that look like? So part of that is, you know, we know that there's occupancy limits based on the fire departments. And what will that look like in terms of occupancy limit increases for a potential addition? Outside of occupancy limits, I imagine that's, I, while we may allow, Judy, I don't know how many, uh, what the occupancy limit is, if it's like eighty.
Eighty?
Is it eighty? So, you know, are there actually eighty seats, uh, that can be accommodated during?
Chair is at the table?
Yeah, yeah. So if, if that's the case, then will two thousand square feet, you know, how many might that add? To both of those numbers? So that gives us a, you know, what might be our targets if we assume that there's gonna be growth in, in utilization? We talked about this last time in terms of possibly doing a, a, a survey of township campus to, and there was, there wasn't clear consensus that that, that was necessary, but I think we need to do some sort of feasibility study of where are we gonna expand, right? And so where are the available expansion points given setbacks of, of this property? And that could be, again, that may be as simple as some folks with some wire measuring, or wheel measuring things, doing some, you know, you know, guesstimates. I, you know, because one, one question may come up, like, we have no legitimate space. I, I don't know if that's really the case. I, you know, I, there might be some shuffling that's, you know, needed. Again, assessing unallocated township property for potential expansion. And then, I think, and this is really taking, going back to the township. What is the township board, you know, what are they gonna want to have at their fingertips to help make them, uh, make a decision? And so there's a financial investment in all of this. I think we have the data, um, uh, to look at, you know, what is the value for our community? I, and, and when we, Miles, if you could pull up that other document, I, you know, one, uh, return on investment piece is like, we need to make an investment if we're gonna expand both the senior center and parking facilities. And so one question is, you know, what's the value per parking space? You know, and, and I don't, and I think that's where I need the most help with. Alright, so let, let's talk about the data, because I think, I'm actually excited about the data. I don't, I had no idea, I, um, just how many meals were delivered. And so, this is twenty twenty-four data, uh, January first through the end of November. I'm hoping I can get December so we can round out the number of. What's that?
We need December two for some of the stuff we're doing.
Yeah, so, across those eleven months, nearly eleven thousand meals were, uh, uh,
Came out of that kitchen.
Cooked and delivered. So ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, you can see the proportionality of in-person versus to-go. And so it's about sixty-two percent in-person.
Can I ask you a question, Jason?
Yeah.
I understand that some of the to-go meals are people that dine in and took a meal to-go.
I can't answer that, that would be a Judy question.
What was the question, John?
I understand that some of the people that dine in also buy a meal to-go or multiple meals to-go, is, and is there any way to tally that? Because it appears as those.
The kitchen does sell, at the end of the meal, meals that were prepared and unsold. So if we had, you know, she made a hundred and sixty-one meatloafs and at the end of the day she only sold a hundred and fifty, she will sell those ten additional meatloafs, just so it's not wasted.
Right, correct, I understand that.
But there are people who come to the senior center who have disabled older adults in their home.
Yes.
They will eat with their friends and colleagues and take a meal for the older person, disabled person who is at their home. So other than that, that's generally how it works.
I understand that, but what I'm trying to segregate is the people that just came and picked up meals to-go and left, did not dine in at all. Is, is there any way to separate those out?
I don't think the data have been collected, if I.
Did you just count the, the to-go meals?
So I, I had photocopies of the monthly calendar and they're handwritten entries as to total meals and, uh, to-go meals. And so tho- those were the data, that was the data that I transcribed into an analyzable form. So, maybe there's data that, that get at that. At some point, we're gonna have to do some estimation, um, in terms of, because we'll have, we're gonna have potentially unique customer base, based on the emergency contact forms. There are some note, uh, notations there as to those who may have, uh, passed on to a happier realm versus, but there'll be some missing data there.
Right.
Uh, and so, I think we could probably do some estimates in terms of a couple of observations of, you know, we go and we count unique people on a particular day. And then, you know, we'll have to extrapolate those estimates, right? I, at the end of the day, you know, when it comes to these types of monitoring and tracking of data for, you know, social services, it's always a balance of how much data do we collect and when does collecting so much data interfere with the delivery of services? And so, I think we're a little bit on the side of not collecting enough data. And Judy, what I would argue is that, um, as I hope is demonstrated here, is that there's a wonderful story to be told about the, the senior center. I, I.
It's an amazing place.
And, and, and collecting a little bit more data would benefit, uh, the senior center and the senior service, senior services advisory committee. And so, and we can talk about that, that may be an outcome of some of these analyses. But let me, let me just highlight a couple of other awesome things. So, across those eleven months, there were a hundred and thirty-one days that meals were delivered. This is the thing that blew my mind. And, and I'm gonna look at you on this. I, I, across those hundred and thirty-one days, there were seventy-six unique meals. Meaning, and this was, this was based on main course only.
Yeah.
And, you know, in my days, which, long ago, of going to, to, you know, high school and, and meal services, we had pizza once a week, we had, you know, you know, mash, you know, like whatever. Seventy-six meals, and these were phenomenal meals, based on not just, I, I, and Miles, I don't know if you have like an example, like power, like a, the, the data sheet that you can throw up there, like the, the side dishes and everything.
No, it's really good.
And so you can see, I, in, in terms of, I have like the, the top five main courses. And then I have the bottom five main courses, and you're probably gonna guess as to what the top five, like, so, top five. Number one, with two offerings was Swiss steak, and that was a hundred and eighteen meals delivered, uh, when they were, on average, when those were offered. Meatloaf, ten offerings, so it was by far the most common meal and probably had the best, like, feedback from, a hundred and fourteen point seven, I, I, meals delivered on a, average. General so's chicken, olive burger, scallop, potatoes and ham, these are the top five, right? Oh, so you, so you can see here.
It's worth noting though, real quick, Jason, that, that's also like not by accident. So they collect this data over time to see which meals perform well and then the ones that underperform, they don't do those meals anymore. And they keep the high performing ones in the rotation.
Yeah, so fish sandwich, liver and onions, biscuits and gravy, sausage, egg and cheese McMuffin, white fish crispy bake. Those, those got some of the lowest offerings, but they all were offered once. And so, the point here is that, you know, whoever our chef is, um, is taking, uh, is, is, is taking their job seriously and really doing a service on behalf of our senior center. So, but let's get back down to what our goal is. So meals per day, right? So on average, uh, we have about eighty-three meals, uh, per day that's, uh, being delivered. Standard deviation there is about seventeen, so there's a little bit of variability. And you can get that sense from the, the main, like, the, the top versus the bottom main courses. Um, and so, I did look, uh, and it's not reported here, there's, the meals are delivered on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. I looked to see if there was variation between those three days. Wednesdays had slightly fewer on average meals delivered. Uh, Mondays and Fridays had, and we're, we're talking about eighty-three versus like seventy-eight between the three days. So not much variability there. June had slightly more, um, but that's really hard to tell. Slightly more, uh, meals delivered throughout, total meals throughout the month compared to January or others. The highest, uh, days were holidays. And those, those were special, those were thematic meals. Thanksgiving, uh, by far had the, uh, the maximum number of meals that were delivered. And so, all of this should make, and it should be at all surprising, but what we now have is some, you know, I, I, data values that can add a little bit of substance to this anecdotal information that we've, we've shared. So, uh, busy day versus, uh, very busy, busy day, these are just, it's the average plus one or two standard deviations. This, I think, should drive how we think about, uh, parking lot capacity. Again, we need to understand, we, we, we know that on average, about sixty-one percent of those meals will be, uh, delivered, uh, or eaten in person, so they're likely to, to park and stay parked through, throughout that. And so, you know, whatever is sixty, well, I guess sixty-one of a hundred meals would be sixty-one, you know. Now, we can look at, uh, the patronage based on, uh, and find out what proportion of, are the, what proportion of the, those are couples that reside in the same household versus, or individuals reside in the same household versus not. So, this is just a snapshot of the type of analyses that we can do with the available data. I, I went a little bit, you know, down the deep end here, but I, you know, I think we can generalize quite a bit of information in terms of, I, I, the available data. And Miles, I, I think is continuing or close to finishing that emergency contact, uh, data. And then, one of the things he can do is map out where are our seniors? What will be helpful for that is, uh, one, it will help us understand who might be driving versus who might be walking. I guess there's probably not a whole lot of people are walking. I, but, I, there might be some.
Who else does deliver people to the senior center?
Yeah, and, and there might be some other utilizations for the senior services and folks, uh, there in terms of understanding. Maybe there's outreach that we can do in other segments of our community versus, you know, where we're, we're, you know, have good representation. But, again, that, that falls a bit outside of the scope of what we're looking at. And so, um, but I think that, I, you know, again, the number of meals delivered will help us get a better picture of what the value of, of this effort is, that we can then provide some information back to the township board. Alright. I talked a lot, let's go back to the analysis plan.
Yeah, so, real quick, just to broaden out to the plan. So, like, Commissioner Almeridge said, so we've put together a number of data pieces and we've even today, we've concluded today the emergency contacts up, so we gave the book back and that was through all occurrences generated throughout the book. And then, um, uh, we have started today working on, there's very standard population growth, um, algorithms or, you know, whatever formulas that planners use that are like common in the industry. So we started to plug those in and then basically. That are like common in the industry, so we started to plug those in and then basically it's kind of like almost like hurricane mapping. You know, if you've seen one of those before where different trajectories are created and then we'll do a best fit line to give us an average where those sit. So we started doing some of that today. So we're working on it, what I guess my impetus is with all this is, does this sound good to everyone? Like, are we in the right sphere? Like, are we going down, do is this, you wanna see anything else in addition to this? Do you think what we're looking at is getting towards that recommendation, particularly probably you Kate, since you're on the board?
I guess, yeah, I'm just still trying to think what what question are we ultimately trying to answer? And I mean, parking studies, just study parking and give us lots of information, but from the board or trustees perspective. What question are we really actually trying to answer? Is it, why is the parking? The way it is or what should we do to change it or I don't know, maybe both of those.
The question my.
Do we need to change it, I guess, also?
My interpretation of it is, what is the current condition? Does that warrant a parking study?
This isn't even a parking study.
No, this isn't even a parking.
This is a senior center's study.
This is a na- this is understanding current condition. I can't recommend, can't recommend anything.
I I I beg to differ, I mean. You can do a parking study without understanding the context, right? Is that helpful?
I don't understand what different information you would get from a parking study. That would be more or less helpful than this information.
I think this is, to me, I think, I I don't know what you're differing on, I agree with that, that's true. I think that this information in my mind. Is like a almost more valuable than the parking study. There's elements of what a parking study would include in this information, but this is a little bit more broader. But I feel like that broadness is important. If you're actually trying to solve the problem, which I think that's what the board is ultimately getting at, is trying to solve a problem. This will give you a solid recommendation to solve said problem.
For a parking study, what we're talking about is a parking demand study. How much parking do we need? And the other question is, when people pick pick our meal, are they there, are they there for five minutes, one minute? You know, how long are they parked?
The meals are prepared, um, they're bagged, they're boxed and bagged at quarter to twelve. And when people walk in to get their meals between quarter to twelve and twelve o'clock, they pull up to the center, front of the building, they get their meal and they walk out. They're not in the building at all, you know, for longer than it takes to pick up their meal.
Is that a, is that an element you think we need to understand here?
Then how long, how long are they using the parking space? What's the turnover of parking for those for those spaces? In other words, how many spaces do we need for just the pickup ones?
But you think that's something we need to understand.
Oh, I think so, because because. I don't know how many people can rotate through the thing, if they're only there for a minute, then you get a lot of cars to store in a few spaces. And then the question is, should we designate some parking spaces just for that purpose? In other words, don't let the long-term parkers park there.
Or or would a pickup window be worth investing in?
True, that's what I was wondering also, if maybe those people aren't even actually parking.
Right, yes, but if they are, we need to take that into account, but pickup window.
Or a way that you could.
I don't know. These could all come into you guys' recommendations to the board, I think, but what I'm trying to look at here is, what do you need to understand to make such recommendations? So it sounds like we need to understand. Average time period of utilization of parking spot. And there's lots of ways we can do to figure that out. So I'm adding that. Where do you guys' recommendations come at this point? That like, we recommend exploring a drive-through window. That that can come later, what I need to understand now is, what do we need to get to that end?
I guess from the board of trustees perspective, it's, is there an issue? That's what we wanna know. Are we automatically assuming that just because somebody says there's an issue, there's an issue?
Well, that's a good point.
But is there really an issue? Like, I can go to Meyer and park farther than I'd like, but that doesn't necessarily mean that Meyer is out of spots.
Yeah, that's correct, yes. So I I would argue that. Is there an issue? If we assume that there likely is an issue, if not currently, then in the future. You have the next thing of, is it worthy of fixing?
Okay.
And that's, and I think that's where this provides a little bit of information that will help towards that second question.
Yeah, step one is identifying, is there an issue? Step through two through four is like, what now?
Yep.
And if I remember, but listening to the question, we were to answer. Your point is, are we meeting by our definitions of how many parking spaces are you supposed to have? For the senior center?
Yeah.
That was the question that I heard at the board meeting.
And that will be a part of our final report analysis, but by that, just so you know.
So let let me let twenty-five years of experience in doing this exact type of work. People request data, right? They they oftentimes don't know what they what they want or they need. And so one of the things that an analyst does or an evaluator does is say, all right, I hear what this, what they're asking. Let me go ahead and anticipate the 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 follow-up question and requests, so that it saves me time. And I think that's that's the approach that this is. Now, there's different, you know. You know, ways of thinking about this and I try to be proactive, but we can also be sort of letter of the law in terms of how we approach this and say. We don't wanna dwell, go in down this pathway. What I'm suggesting for us is that. The hard part will really be about what is the prob, do we actually have a problem now, right? Because we gotta look at the 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 spaces, we gotta look at. The easy parts, you know, for me is to do some of these like, you know, kind of value estimates based on, you know, the available data. And so I think as a service to the the township board, we can do both hands.
Mark, that will be included in our report, though, so we put this land use into a category, we evaluated what parking is required by our ordinance, that's in our report.
Okay, but and I don't disagree, we're going to. As a planning commission, think about where's our population going? Is this going to be a greater demand later? To the point, do we have the land to be able to expand with a two thousand square foot addition? How much of that's going to go into kitchen, how much of that's going to be seating, restrooms, all that comes to play? And is that worth spending that much money to get? In my opinion, it wouldn't be worth much. And versus looking, do we have space to expand? And look at the next twenty years.
Yeah.
Because you wanna make the investment worth it. I mean, you can put a Band-Aid on it.
You are getting into the territory of recommendations, which again, I think all I'm trying to explore right now is, what do we need to get to recommendations?
So how many parking spots are there currently?
We counted it out when we first got here, I wanna say it depends on what you view as a senior center parking spot. But when we initially counted out, it was something in the realm of like sixteen.
Yeah, I was thinking of seventy.
Yeah, sixty or seventy, and what was required by our ordinance was like in the mid-forties, so we were definitely above. And that was just pigeonholing them into the best land use we thought they'd fit into, which is dining restaurant.
That's that's based on the adioc.
That, no, the, that's based upon square footage or occupancy, whichever is greater. But when we typically, when planners. Work with our use policies to figure out what kind of parking is needed for what land uses, which in recent years, obviously, like planners have moved away from providing more. It used to be, let's go safe, if we think we need parking for forty spots, let's go ahead and do sixty, right? Just 'cause.
Right.
Now, we're like, okay, if we think we need forty, hey, let's do thirty-five, right? See how it works out, because we're not trying to create parking for, we planning has moved away from that. Now, when we looked at ours in Bath and what the emphasis was, when you think about a restaurant. What makes a senior center so unique as a restaurant land use, and we talked about this in our first meeting, is so many people are driving themselves. When you think about like a Denny's, for example, or like, I think we were talking about Texas Roadhouse at first meeting for some reason. Families are showing up, two kids in the car, husband and wife, that's your typical, so one car is holding four people, uh, like. So I think the average would be like two point five people per vehicle. So planners use that two point five when they figure out car calculation. In this case, the average is probably closer to like one point two per car. Which is, makes this a unique situation.
The follow-up to that is, are the parking spaces optimized or is there a way to optimize them further?
Like, is there, can we make them skinnier? And I would say.
Probably not a great idea.
Yeah, I would say in this land use category, I feel like that wouldn't be a, I would recommend away from that, but legally, we probably couldn't.
The other uniqueness about this is, we only have an hour and a half service, whereas a restaurant.
Hey, you're turning there too.
And that, you're turning tables over a link. You are getting more into the recommendations, but like that could be looking at trying to stem peak flows is one of the things me and Jason discussed. Like, what are policy ways where you could? Because you got a a graph that looks like this in terms of usage, like how can you get this to happen? That would be a way to look at this.
I think the board of trustees is certainly open to recommendations.
I think as part of the state, we we need to identify how many spaces public works needs, how many spaces the police need, how many pieces the. Administration building needs.
And I think.
And set that aside, Jay, these spaces are not available for the service center, but do we know how many, how many that is?
I think Jason very intentionally put unallocated township properties and he very intentionally put. Campus parking space utilization, so he didn't, you know, he didn't say seniors, but you're right.
We need to identify who they're for, I think.
Yeah.
And because as we, and the other, I think a bigger question is, if we're gonna expand the senior, the the senior center. Which will probably require more parking, do we wanna do it here? But we wanna.
We are getting into the recommendations again.
Should we re- you know, reuse that building for something else? And put the service center somewhere else, twenty new buildings somewhere else.
We are getting them recommendations.
Future planning department building?
We're trying to move ourselves into the basement so people stop talking to us, but. So, um. Anyways. Is it, but this sounds like, it this sounds good, is what I'm hearing. It sounds like we're, you guys like what you're hearing and we're heading down a good path.
Yes.
Okay. We'll continue.
So, I mean, I I think some things that can occur. It sounds like it'd be good to have some volunteers to do some headcounts at some of the, you know, upcoming, you know, popular meals. Looking at some older gentlemen.
Parking utilization, the quickest way to count. Occupancy of parking is you've got a drone that can take pictures. And just fly the drone over, take pictures, certain times during the day, then at some time you sit down and count them.
We can do that.
It's a lot more efficient of use of time than it's go and count cars in the parking lot.
Yeah, I have a drone and actually Brett has a drone that he's willing to let us use.
Could you, when, as people are paying for their meal, could you just ask, how'd you get here today? Did you drive yourself, did you ride with somebody, did you come on the bus, did you walk? Would that be reasonable, quick?
Well, and that's kind of, Jason, I would give.
Which category do you fall into today?
Yeah, that somebody would have to collect that data.
You have them scan a QR code with their phone and then they fill out a Google.
Okay. It does that when everyone starts laughing, just by the way.
Sorry.
Just so you know, Brett, that's something happens.
Kate needs to be less funny.
Yeah, um. Okay.
But the thing is, with with a drone, you're only gonna take pictures probably. From fifteen minutes before they start serving meals until. So it's that very short period of time you gotta worry about, that's the only peak time you gotta worry about.
Yeah.
So you're not flying drones twenty-four hours a day, you're just flying drones for a couple of hours, maybe, that's it.
That's good, because my battery life on mine sucks, but you're.
And the workers will be here all day usually.
Yeah, but then you gotta identify which which spaces are being used eight hours and which spaces are being used for thirty-five minutes.
If.
Good point, yeah.
If the working group does need help with this, though, are we able to reach out to a couple of the members for help? So Mark, you be open to helping. Okay.
How are the seniors gonna handle like drones, like droning above them?
Well, the good news about drones, and I don't know, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think once you're thirty meters in the air, we're in public airspace. And mine's quiet enough that you would never know I'm there.
They're probably hard to hear.
You're still not supposed to fly over people, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, but you could just be off to the side.
Over the cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
Least as a part, under part one oh seven.
Is yours fixed wing or are you propeller?
They're all props, but yeah, they're fold out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just let me know when you guys do it, because I wanna be here.
Well, I'm honestly, mine's so small, we were talking about, mine's so small, I would be thirty meters up, you won't even know I'm there.
Well, if you're under two hundred and forty-nine grams, then you can fly over people.
Okay.
So I don't know how big yours is.
See, I didn't take the FAA test, because I didn't feel like it, that sucks.
You're recreational, no.
Okay, cool, that gives me hope for the future. Okay, in case you didn't, okay, one cool thing about Brett being on the planning commission is, yeah, obviously he has drone resources, but he took the extra stuff to get FAA certified, so. He can use his drones and capacities that like other people couldn't.
Do our public safety departments not have a drone?
No, the only department that has a drone in the township and has the go-ahead by the border, because there's, you fall into a lot of. Weird rules with this.
You say assessing, I'm gonna be upset.
No, it's not assessing, and that assessing is actually a really controversial one for the use of drones, but it's the fire department.
But yeah, that's what I was.
Even police departments are very controversial on the use of drones.
Are they, do they have a part one oh seven FAA certified pilot?
I have no idea, I have no idea.
I mean, typically, fire departments.
I assume they're going through all the proper channels, I hope. I know that their drone has, um. IR capability, so when they're trying to search for where fires are. So, cool.
I think Kate made a good point, what what would it take to collect that data that you were referring to, Kate?
Yeah, like, everyone goes in there, has to pay, I'm, correct, right? Everyone who goes in has to pay?
Yes.
Yeah, and which is. And so when they pay, you could just ask, how did you get here today? I drove myself, I rode with a friend, I took the bus, I walked. You know, which category do you fit into and I mean, just.
And we do have a cashier who does take the money, a cashier, she could, with the right piece of paper, you know, she could make those.
Marks.
No, we'd be more than willing to take a lunch hour and collect it too, like, we don't wanna make their staff do it for us.
Are they open on Monday, President's Day?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, not President's.
Not this coming.
The townships close home.
Alright, that's what I thought, but.
Well, my my thought was to follow up with Commissioner Almeridge tomorrow, probably sometime. Talk about how the meeting went out and then like come up with unique ways to gather this data. But everything that you're saying, I think, would be in the wheelhouse of what we would explore. Because we're gonna try to take the lowest hanging fruit way to collect this, because obviously like time is not infinite.
Well, I think Judy's got a good point, Miles, if you already have a greeter and she takes the money. And I don't think it's a big deal to ask people how they came and have four to categories and make a check mark.
Yeah, as long as they be open to it and it was like not putting them out, then sure, now if they give us pushback, we'll be like, okay, that's fine, we'll just have me or the intern.
So you could just make a little chart for them.
Yeah.
Well, even one of our senior services advisory board members could check it off when they come in the door, how'd you get here today?
So maybe as a suggestion, um, if we're gonna collect a little bit of additional information, maybe. Let's try to kill a couple of birds with one stone and think about, may maybe there's some other data fields that we may wanna collect. You know, casually ask people as they come in or observe and so, and, you know, to fill in some of the gaps here.
Yeah, I wanna talk with you and get like a questionnaire before, that way you're right, because you don't wanna over survey people, they get survey fatigue. And then the staff here are like, why is the planning commission bothering, or planning department bothering me again? So, because they're trying to do their thing, right? Like, this is outside of their normal, like, they're like, I'm trying to do meals here.
Yeah, they're probably tired of hearing about parking too, though.
No, a hundred, a hundred percent, so. And honestly, and I, and we've given Jason a lot of data. That every department happily shared with us, I think people, staff, seniors, people that work over there are all like, yes. Like, well, I'm glad we're talking about this, so.
Another related thing, but not not for the parking study, to me, it seems like. The township would wanna know what the cost is to operate that building, not just for the meals, but in general for the cer, you know. What's the, what's the township paying?
The full lifecycle cost is one thing we are looking at.
Isn't it, okay, good.
That's one of our.
Because the question we brought before is, what percentage of these meals are going to Bath residents as opposed to non-Bath residents?
Yeah, that's our, those are the two data points that we concluded this week is. Our unique characters of who's coming. our unique characters of who's coming, um, and then, uh, the full lifecycle cost of the facility itself. Okay.
Did I give you enough information?
I'm good. I'll follow up with Commissioner Almerigi.
Any thumbs down on this approach? Are everyone comfortable?
Yep, very good. We good, Miles?
I'm good.
We move on? New business?
Yep. Alright, you want me to kick it off, John?
Sure, please.
Alright, so it's kind of a day, a heavy night, sorry about that. That's just like what we've been working on the last couple weeks, so that's what's on the packet. So, the sewer tap-in fee is another, I think rightfully so, like kinda just item that hasn't been addressed in a while and is kinda coming to a head and administration. And, a- and the supervisor have asked us to take a look at it. Uh, John and Ray, so the chair and commissioner Severi here, have been helping me think about ways to go about this, so similar to the last discussion. This one almost is a, a heavier workflow because there's a lot of data inputs in this. And we just wanna make sure, again, before we do probably another twenty or forty hours of work, that we're headed in the right direction. I did put together, um, some stuff that I thought was interesting, just to show you guys what we're doing here, so. I'll just kinda go through this quick presentation. So this is a map of the township sewer system, uh, they have different colors that were, uh, correspond to where in different parts of the system were built out. This is a little hard to see, so apologies that, I got this from SCUMA, which I'm pretty sure it's a scan. So.
That's already, that's already part of it, right?
Yeah, it's only part of it. What this is basically trying to indicate though is, it, it was hard to put a dollar, it's actually really hard, even for engineers at SCUMA to put a, to pencil down like a dollar amount on what the sewer system is worth. What the sewer system is worth, there can be a lot of factors that generate a number and all of them are large numbers. But what this map basically says is, the sewer system in Bath Township has grown exponentially over time to service different regions of the township. And what you need to be thinking about is that monetarily equates to value of the system. So just to put it in, you know, so, so everyone understands if you're unfamiliar with the cost of sewers, which I think most of the people here are familiar with, but just the Chandler Road portion of the sewer, which we're looking at, which is basically this little red portion right here. The cost of the estimates we're getting back for, uh, ripping out what's in the ground and then bringing in larger pipes and putting them in a different location and meeting all the modern standards that go along with that, are estimates anywhere between four million and four point five million dollars, so somewhere in there. So then you look at this entire, you project that out to this entire system, you're like, alright, this is, you know, we're talking about a lot of money here. That is in the ground, that's an asset of Bath Township. Okay, so with that being said, here are some actual dollar amounts, which are a little bit easier to put, uh, uh, find, um, you know, a, a, actual dollar amount too, because this is the value of Bath Township's portion of the plant alone. Um, we own something like sixteen, uh, percent of the plant at this time. That number has changed over time, depending on, um, our portion of the plant versus other communities' portion of the plant. Um, as we buy and trade REU and plant, plant capacity grows. So, um, what you can see again is a large, um, increase over time and then a jump. This is when the capacity of the plant and improvements to plants were beginning to be brought online. So obviously, we, the township along with the other municipalities and SCUMA itself, we put a lot of money in the pot to build the capacity of the plant, which has freed up REUs for us to be able to use today. If anyone's unfamiliar with what an REU is, it's residential equivalent unit. That is, uh, are, one REU is the equivalent of what the average single-family home in this part of the country uses in terms of sewer usage. There is also metering, which is, uh, more modern systems, we use metering to figure out usage. We don't have metering attached to every use in the township, um, it's very expensive to do, so we use our EU system to determine our usage.
On, on this graph, you put that, now, the cost in two thousand and four was six and a half million, as that goes up, are those all, did it go up because of expansion of the plant or just because of the value i- inflation?
Three things are going on. Expansion of the plant, that is one factor that's making it go up. Inflation is another thing making it go up, and these were all, uh, according to Brad, put into like real value dollar for, uh, the year of twenty twenty-three. So that's important to note too. Um, and then, um, it's also a percentage of the plant is changing over time too, right? So there's a couple of different factors at play. It, we could've shown all of that, right, but it'd be hard to put that all on a graph. I'm just trying to simply break down that the number's going up over time with a large jump in recent years.
I just wanna make sure these numbers all represent current value.
That's a part. I always, I got it from Brad, and it's according to him. So, um, this was kind of an interesting, uh, chart as well. So what you're looking at here is the tap-in fees over time, um, and then adjusted for inflation into twenty twenty-four dollars. So, the blue line is tap-in fees over time, so that's what the actual dollar amount that was charged in that year when somebody tapped in. And these were used, just to keep it apples to apples over the years. We looked at single-family homes built outside of a subdivision, cause there was a policy for a while in the eighties in Bath Township, that if a single-family home was built inside of subdivision, they charged them a lower rate to help the developers justify bringing in large amount of utility through the subdivision. It wasn't much of a difference, but just to keep it apples to apples. The interesting thing about this is if you put this into today's dollars, you can see, we were charging the most in today's dollars when the system first came online. And then we steadily charged less over time, even though there were s- maybe small increases happening, they weren't even close to enough to keep up with inflation. Then you see the jump in two thousand and six, because sometime in these years here, they increased it by a, a thousand or, uh, a thousand five hundred to what it is currently, three thousand dollars per tap-in, per REU per tap-in, right? So like if apartment complexes comes on, they have seventy-five dwelling units, they're charged three thousand times seventy-five, that's their tap-in fee. But it hasn't been changed since two thousand and six, so what you'd see if this graph continued to today is this line going like this over time.
So, so with this, I think one thing that'd be helpful is to add in the missing two decades, right? But what if you were to flip it, meaning you hold that green line constant at like eighty-two hundred dollars or whatever? Um, and then to project what would have those costs then for each of those years to maintain that equivalent today dollar value?
No, that'd be great, that'd be great. Yeah, I think that's a great way, and let's take a note of what you're saying there.
Add another line.
Yeah, we could add another line to it to show projecting of like how maybe this, if we would've chose an alternative reality where Bath Township would've made a policy at that time to say, this will grow with the rate of inflation in that year. What that dollar amount would look like. And ultimately, I'll keep going with my presentation. What we're trying to get to is I'm giving you a bunch of different data points and what it'll probably look like at the end of our recommendation, when we put this all onto some kind of more official looking report, is we're, it'll almost be like a plot map of different price points that you could gather of where this price could be at. Because according to Brad and every other engineer I've talked to, correct me if I'm wrong here, you're never gonna get any equation that's out there that's gonna be the perfect equation to figure out what a tap-in fee should cost, where you're gonna be like, oh yeah, the tap-in fee for Bath Township, given all the metrics we're plugging in, should be six thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. And you're gonna have to use, according to SCUMA and our engineers I've talked to, a variety of methods and then determine, you know, within that, what is reasonable for your community. So, because again, there's so much variability in how you value the system itself.
Did you look at other communities?
Of what their tap-in fees are, yes, we have looked at other communities, and we've even looked at communities in SCUMA, and it's interesting that, you say that cause when we were asking for this data from Brad, he's like, it's so funny to him, and he was able to give it to me, like, you know, within hours, because he's currently doing the same thing right now for DeWitt Township, DeWitt City and Watertown, they're all talking about this. Because the cost of sewer in the last couple of years to repair and do maintenance has gone, is not gone up with the rate of inflation. Uh, municipalities are struggling to pay for this right now, cause the costs have doubled and tripled for labor in this space and for material in this space. So communities are, alright, tap-in fees have to go up, like we're, these are, we're gonna have to do something.
I guess, I guess question, do people understand what the tap-in fee is supposed to be?
That's a good question, that's a cool.
Because the tap-in fee is somebody buying in, buying their share of the system that already exists. Now, as our system right now exists and it's worth whatever it's worth. You divide that by the number of REUs we've got, and that's what every REU owns of the system. Somebody buying in should pay that same amount.
That will be.
The hard part is to figure out what the system is worth. And part of the thing is, some people look, well, you know, our system was worth, you know, six, six million dollars back whenever, but they never inflated that to today's cost. They say, well, when it was built, it was worth six million. What's the replacement cost? It's not six million, it's probably twenty-five million, or whatever, whatever it is. So you gotta make sure your value of the system is inflated to, to reflect the replacement cost, not the value it was when it was built.
Yeah, and that is something that, um, we talked about in our working group and Brad seconded that, he's like, cause with tap-in fees, legally speaking, when we were talking to our lawyers about how, um, sewer ordinances get put together, so your actual sewer bill that comes in the mail, that's supposed to pay for maintenance and operation, right? Just everyday standard maintenance. Now, replacement costs, you know, not your general maintenance and not your general op- operation, that's when your tap-in fee fund is supposed to come in to play. Um, so when we were talking to Brad, he said the same thing, he's like, yeah, you could do these audits with these numbers showing that your system's worth ten million. And that's by, you know, the state standard of using six million built in nineteen seventy, that might be true, but that's not where you should be at when you're evaluating stuff. So, let me just go further, there is slides that breaks down, um, where our costs should be at. Uh, another thing we wanted to look at was, um, there are some costs that we also are not currently calculating, uh, that we saw other communities look at, so this is just one of those, so they price in administrative fees. We're not pricing those in, they price in final costs of inspection, we're not pricing those in. So, right now, our tap-in fee is three thousand dollars with fifty dollars for inspection. That fifty dollars for inspection is supposed to cover all the township's administrative costs, the plan review that happens at SCUMA, and then the, in the field inspection that happens, you know, when they're actually putting the pipe in the ground. We'd like, this slide just saying, that needs to be broken down in a line item format, and then there needs to be some kind of projection of that in the future with this. So going into a couple ways, and this is what, uh, Mr. Severi was just communicating, was the system value divided by the number of REUs in the system as a whole. Um, we also, uh, came up with this method, we saw some communities using, and again, I don't have any numbers here, because I'm just saying, these are ideas we had. We will get the numbers, some of which we've already gotten at this point, and we will put this into a report. If this is making sense to you, just like the last topic, then great. If this isn't making sense to you, like, please say something, so we don't waste our time. Another way that we could add a value on that plot map is taking the tap-in fee during a certain year and time, taking the current tap-in fee and marking that as X, putting the average, uh, home price at the time, so you can figure out what the percentage of the bringing that home to market, the tap-in fee represented, and then looking at the average cost of a home now, and then solving for X, and then that gives you another projection where your tap-in fee should be at.
I can see that as, as a data point to say, compare what we're actually charging for tap-in fee to what it used to be, because I sure wouldn't wanna sell a tap-in fee based on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm.
That's, that, I mean, no, but, but the, the thing is with that there can say, well, this tap-in fee is way too high, based on what I'm paying for my home. That'll show you that your tap-in fee now is either higher or lower, based on the price of the home than it was back whatever.
Yeah, it's just an art, it's similar to the data point we discussed here with building another line off the chart. I don't know if that line should represent the amount we should charge, it's just another point.
So this only takes into account the existing system, not if the, the expansion was big enough in the area where you had to add capacity to that system, i.e. build another plant or something like that.
One, um, yeah, but going, going back to this, I think what we're trying to say is when builders bring homes to market, they're pricing in different things that, you know, okay, if I'm gonna build a home in this area, I'm taking into account what are my building permit fees, what are my labor costs, what's my material costs? And I think what this would point out, if we ran these numbers, is it likely show that, at least in Bath Township, the percentage of what a tap-in fee used to cost and get factored in of bringing home to market is wildly under. You know, maybe before it was five percent of home cost was the tap-in fee, and now it might be even under one percent with our modern tap-in fees. You know, ju- just giving the board another data point of saying, hey, we're justifying this through twenty different ways of why this needs to be raised.
So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling with that first calculation of average home price back in nineteen eighty versus twenty twenty-five. In, in theory, home price has not a one-to-one, uh, uh, relationship with usage or strain on the facility. But what I wonder is, you know, did we have Hawk Hollow, did we have some of these kind of higher-priced developments back in nineteen eighty? And if not, you know, what was the housing basis? And if we compare that to twenty twenty-five, are we artificially inflating or deflating some of these ratios?
Yeah, but what would be interesting is you're, I think you're probably right that, like, you're basically saying our housing stock was a lower tier of quality back in the day versus like a lot of our new construction now is built at a higher tier of housing stock.
I wouldn't say higher or lower tier, I'd say more expensive versus more authentic or.
Yeah, sure, whatever, whatever words you wanna use.
Whatever terminology you want.
But what would be interesting is you would expect by that metric that the tap-in fee should've been, um, should be a much higher percentile of the cost, or well, even maybe lower, because if you're voting to a lower market, you know, like then they need cheaper inputs to justify the lower housing costs. Today, their margins are, in theory, for selling a six hundred thousand dollar house, you're having a healthier margin. But our inputs are still even lower than they were at the lower housing tier. You know, so I don't know, I don't know if it's worth value or not, and maybe we could even refine this down instead of saying average home, we could look at like average new build costs.
I think, I sort of bring up, newer there, you don't want average home.
Average new build, yeah, and it, we'll see if we can find that data. I definitely don't think we'd be able to find it at the local level, but we might be able to fill the average new build at the county level.
Didn't we just have, didn't we just have a, uh, chart that came in the summary you posted?
Yeah, real, realtors typically will, and, but that's what I'm saying, like that data doesn't exist on the US Census Bureau. We would have to rely on like a, a private market study. So, yeah, and that's kinda where we're at, um, I, does anyone, obviously, like I said, we have a lot of data that we've got put together that we didn't necessarily wanna bring in this presentation tonight, cause it is a sensitive topic. We're talking about money and the amount of money you're gonna be charging people, so we don't wanna build out a full report with recommendations until we're ready to do so. But, um, I wanna schedule a meeting, just like with the other working group, with a follow-up with you guys to see where we're at. But does the group as a whole have any input for this process, or are things we should be looking at, things we're not looking at?
So you're at desk?
Absolutely. I think everyone understands the implementa- implement, implications of having an underfunded sewer expansion, um, budget, to what that means for the growth or lack thereof growth in the township. There's already one corridor where we've reached capacity and several others where we're fifty to a hundred REUs left, you know. Fifty to a hundred year REUs left, you know, which is not a great space to be in.
You know, that one corridor where we've reached capacity already, Chandler, I think is what you're talking about. Tap in fee there will, if we use this, would be. Their cost to buy into the existing system. They're still gonna pay the cost of expanding the sewers. But somebody does.
Yeah, somebody does.
So their tap in fee plus the sewer cost. And, and some things you'll read, it depends who pays for that increase, that new sewer, and how that gets paid for.
Well, and there are lots of ways to really get down into the weeds with this, like you saw in that report I shared with you and John that Brad provided. They even went down to kind of the area level and said, you know, different areas in the townships are paying different fees based upon. You know, what their impact on the system is, given the corridor that the sewage falls. How many lift stations are even involved in pricing that into the consumer.
I think that's what they did in, what is it, two thousand six or whatever, they can use the REUs.
So that could all come with a recommendation from this body going up to the board, is you know, you want a more nuanced way to calculate. I don't think, ob- obviously, the planning department has that resources to do that, but that could take the form of. We would, we, we recommend, you know, a more nuanced way to calculate, and then the board is able to kick that to the township engineer. And they do have the resources to figure out what those fees should look like. So, yeah, so that's where we're at. It's, honestly, it seems like not, I don't know if it seems like a lot of work or not, but it was a lot of work. So I've been emailing Brad at SCUMA quite a bit, trying to get data for this, so.
One of the things I think you should be aware of is that when we bought some extra REUs for Watertown Township. We paid five thousand dollars for them and we're presently selling them for three, so. Uh, that's not a really good, sound investment.
And five thousand is pretty cheap.
Yep, yeah, yeah, but it was, it was, you know, based on what they felt they were worth and.
What John saw about for people that don't know is like, we, since we've reached capacity at the plant in recent years. We've had to go to other communities that have leftover capacity and buy it from them. That way we're allowed to bring things online and send it to the plant.
But that's just the plant value. That five thou- that five thousand dollars does not include the value of our.
That's.
In-ground system.
That just counts what we bought for plant capacity.
That means that tap in fee should be well above five thousand dollars.
So, I, I guess, I mean, adding to this, um, you know, one question you could have is. What was the oversight over this? What are the structures of oversight within the township over the sewer system? That may have allowed for some of the slippage of maintenance and monitoring. Meaning perhaps recommendation is an oversight committee or a dedicated committee to. Deliberate on these things in an ongoing fashion.
Yeah, it would definitely be nice when the re- recommendation for the tap sewer tap in fee comes. And when the board ultimately takes action, it would be nice for a piece of that to say something along the line. And there's a myriad of ways you could go about it, but something along the lines of like. Either annual, semi-annual, on a five-year, ten-year basis of like an, a policy. That maybe gets put codified into the sewer ordinance where the tap in fee. Automat- if, if in lieu of no action from a future board, it automatically raises itself, so it doesn't become a political football.
But I think beyond that, I mean, it, it seems like ongoing monitoring for maintenance, you know.
When it comes to maintenance, I mean, that is responding, that's what town, that's what the township is paying SCUMA for. We own the system, but they're. They're the body that's supposed to be monitoring the system.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just reflecting on this, that, you know, we bought five thousand dollars per RU. But we sold it for, you know, three thousand without, you know, consideration of the other costs. Like somewhere, it, it seems that someone dropped the ball.
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
I mean, if somebody had purchased that same RU in Watertown Township, what would they have paid for it? Five thousand dollars at least, right?
I assume so, yeah. Well, that's just plant capacity, doesn't cost the getting it to the plant.
Right.
There's two different items here that we're working with. So as we buy more plant capacity, which we are with this remodel of the plant, we've also gotta add that into the cost of the system.
Yeah.
And then depending on where you develop, there's gonna be either minimal capital investment. Because you already have capacity, or there's gonna be a lot of capital investment. Because we've gotta upgrade lift stations or pipe sizes, that's a different cost. And you gotta keep two pots of money here. One is the maintenance and upkeep and the system and the cost to run the plant. And the other is construction cost. And you're not supposed to mix maintenance and construction cost together. And the township has in the past occasionally done that. And some communities relied on tap fees to finance their system. And when they got the system was built out in a mature system, they got really s- s- caught in a financial bind. Because the cost of operation um was not upgraded to reflect the actual cost of operation.
That is true.
Our, our monthly or quarterly fees are relatively low for a community of our size.
And in that cost is, there, there should be a reserve fund sending aside repair work.
Yes, there should.
Replacement.
That's correct, and that should be part of the quarterly fee.
Yeah, so I think that. Definitely, even with preliminary data, I mean, it shows that something's gotta happen here, so I'm glad we're looking at this, but. Um, all right, if nothing else, I'll continue to work with the wor- the working uh committee. Or subcommittee, whatever you wanna call it, ad hoc committee, I guess is the appropriate word of. John and Ray, and we'll continue to work with the SCUMA director, Brad Gertzky. And take his recommendations into consideration as we move through this process.
Kinda, maybe just for clarification for me, what about industrial and commercial?
That was another way that we've seen in that report that I shared with uh, from Brad, what I shared with the ad hoc committee.
I mean, is that converted to.
He separated out land uses and had different tap in fees. That's actually one of the more common ways that we see it separated out. Commercial versus industrial versus residential, really into those three categories. So I think ultimately, our recommendation will take some nuances, which are, you know. Breaking it out into, it could be broken out into area, it could be broken out into land use. And all of that would include some kind of recommendation for um upage of fees over time. You know, by some metric that is determined. That way, again, it doesn't become political to just go up with the rate of inflation, which really should probably be happening automatically. You, I would say though, just on the, on the staff administration side, one thing we were thinking about when we thought about that is. Rate of inflation sounds good, but practically, it's tough for um the township to administrate. Because that means you're changing all your forms and fees and record retention, and you know, you have to put, update that in the B S and A. So what we saw was a lot of communities doing it on like a five-year basis. That way, it's not something that is throwing everybody off every year. Okay.
The one, one thing you brought up though was. Maintenance of these pump stations and stuff like that, that should not be part of the tap in fee. That is all part of the user.
Right, right, but upgrades should be.
Upgrades, upgrades, that's cap included, that increases the value of the system.
Correct.
It increases the value of the system.
Yes.
Doesn't become, doesn't, impacts the cap.
Correct.
So I think we, we got a survey, a, a study going on now to, to address the other part of this.
Right.
And we haven't seen that yet, so it'd be interesting to see what they're, what they're doing there.
They had a draft that was almost ready, but then it seemed like there were some holes in logic and they sent it back to get. Yep. So, they're working on it allegedly. All right, I'm all set, John, with that one.
Well, then you wanna move on to your report for us?
Um, I got one, there's one more item.
The meeting schedule.
Oh, plenty goes in.
Oh, I'm sorry, your s- meeting schedule, yes. I'm sorry, I overlooked that.
Oh, you're good. Um, yeah.
Something Miles and I talked about uh recently, and go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, I met with um the chair and the vice chair and discussed um something that is starting. Starting to concern staff a little, so we wanted to bring it to the planning commission and get you guys' thoughts and input and possibly even some action. Um, we got a big task ahead of us. I don't think, I don't wanna, you know, oversell it. But I also don't wanna understate how much labor goes into a comprehensive plan. And um what that looks like on a day-to-day workload basis. And what some of the statutory requirements are for a comprehensive plan in terms of public engagement and public input. And you typically, what you see those take the form of is like special meetings or working meetings with the planning commission. Um, with, but, one thing that's always kind of been curious about Bath Township, at least since I got here. Um, to me personally, is you guys have a very frequent meeting schedule. Um, you guys meet every two weeks for planning commission meetings. Um, if you look at every, I've never even heard of a community. I've never worked with a community or worked in a community that had that frequency of planning commission meetings until I started working here. Um, we did look at every community around us to see. If that's just something that was standard in the Lansing area, um, it's not. Um, so there are only, we looked at Victor, who turns out, even though they don't do their own zoning, they have a planning commission. So it's surprising there, but we looked at Victor, DeWitt Township, DeWitt City, Ovid, Saint Johns. Clay County, Ealing County, Eingham County, um. Meridian, East Lansing, Lansing, you know, Grand ledge, like we, everywhere around us, that was a place. We looked at a, a lot of them. The only ones that we could find that had two planning commission meetings a month were Meridian Township and East Lansing. Everywhere else is meeting once a month, which is standard in the industry. One big thing that I've tried to do successfully sometimes, maybe unsuccessfully other times is. Since I've got here at Bath Township is professionalize the planning department and bring it into the current decade, I'll say. Um, we've tried to do that in a number of ways, so a lot of that has been digitizing records, so we can more quickly respond to FOIOS. Um, digitizing the permit process, taking in permits online. We're still working with the treasurer to try and start taking payments over the web, you know, so people don't have to like come in to pay for things. These are just services that in the year of like, you know, when I started twenty twenty-one, were common, and now it's twenty twenty-five. And the public expects us to have this information on hand and be in this modern footprint. Um, but with government being slow and, you know, um, hard to change, I'll say. Um, that hasn't always come easy. Also, I'll say in my time here, you know, we give you guys those end-of-year reports. Um, at, you know, detailing what the department's done over time. And, I mean, you guys have seen the reports at the end of every year, you know, our SUPs since I've been here, we always do more SUPs than the year prior. We do more ordinances than the year prior. We do more, um, zoning permits than the year prior. Like every graph is like at a forty-five degree angle of all of our metrics of output. And a lot of that is due to, we've been able to create efficiencies within the department, we've been able to bring on a second intern. But we have diminishing returns on how much efficient, like how efficient we can get. Um, and we have a heavy workload coming up this year. So I guess what I'm trying to get at with all this is, I'd like, there's many things we've standardized. That have been, you know, solely within the control of the planning department and many efficiencies created. This is one that ob- obviously requires of action from the planning commission. But I think it would bring our department in line, or the, our division, let's say. The planning division is the planning department, planning commission together, planning division. Um, that'd bring our division in line with the vast, vast majority of. Planning divisions in the state of Michigan. Um, Meridian and East Lansing have two meetings a month. They also have six-plus planners. That are able to crank out work, um, so time's finite. And like within the working week, as all you that have had jobs and have jobs know. If you are spending four hours on this, all that means is you're not spending four hours on that. So, on average, these packets take. The staff probably, I'll say like four to six hours to put together on a Thursday. And then, you know, that's taking in Taylor's time of posting on whatever notices have to be made. It depends, sometimes it takes longer depending on what's going on. Um, this one was an easier packet, so it was probably more towards a four-hour one. Um, but there's inputs that went in this packet as well, you know. But then the meetings themselves, like this takes time, right? There's two staff people here right now. And then there's a backend of the meeting of like compiling the video, posting it on YouTube, doing the minutes. All in all, I mean, we're talking about in a two-week turnaround period, at least one and a half. To probably two working days dedicated to the meeting. And that to me just feels like a lot. And going into a year where we have to uh press out a comp plan. It feels like the right time to address the fact that we're out of line with every community around us. And I guess I wouldn't be bringing this to you if that wasn't the case, like if every, if everybody else is operating at this tempo and keeping up. I'd be like, okay, like obviously the problem's me, but we're operating at a higher tempo than everyone else. With fewer resources than everyone else. But I don't think we can keep that up and deliver a efficient product in a comp plan year. So that's why I'm bringing this up. So I.
Just to elaborate, Miles and I talked about this quite a bit and there is quite a bit of time that goes into the minutes. And the preparation of the packet and so forth, and I can see his point. Uh, the only drawback I would see is if we have a lot of uh proposals before us in terms of development. We might need to schedule an extra meeting or two, but I think that would be a better plan. Considering the amount of time that it's gonna take all of us, including the staff, to work on the master plan. So my suggestion would be that uh if everybody is, or the majority of people are on board, then we try it. We go to one meeting a month, we see if it's feasible. If it's not working out, then we'll change to something else. But in the meantime, we do have the option of scheduling another meeting if we so desire.
Yeah, like if a developer came to us during the pre-application meeting and was like, hey, I got um. An old Rowley's that's looking to locate in Bath Township. We've got ninety days to make this deal happen, because we're under contract and we need zoning approval in ninety days. Obviously, we would come to the planning commission, but hey, there's a developer interested, we'd like to request a special meeting.
Right.
So I don't, nothing pre- preempts us from doing that.
Correct.
And that meeting probably wouldn't take as long to set up either.
No.
Right.
It would just, it'd be up to you guys when you'd like to set it. I guess my suggestion would be if you guys go down to one meeting, you would just keep it like. The one meeting would be the second Tuesday of the month, because that's what people are used to. And then the fourth Tuesday of the month would be that floating date that we keep in mind for special meetings. Which we will have to have later in the year when we get to the public input sessions for the comprehensive plan.
And hopefully the plan would be, we can reserve that second meeting to the month for the master plan and just deal with the master plan in that meeting. Unless there's some other issue that needs to be addressed. That would be the planning, so. I'd like some input from people, uh, pro, negative, whatever your feeling is, let's talk about it.
Feel like we.
Go ahead, George.
Feel like we could get through our, our stuff that we need to get through in the one meeting?
Yeah, I think so, I think so. I think sometimes that we do pontificate on topics. And if there is a stacked agenda, we'll have to keep it rolling. Um, but again, you know, every other community is operating in this fashion, so.
Will we be able to set like a time limit to not go past like nine o'clock or something?
Oh, absolutely. We are not gonna go past nine o'clock.
And if, and again, to John's point, if we see that that's not working out, then, you know. I would say we need to go back at that point, like it's not, fa- failure isn't an option, obviously. I would say we need to go back at that point. Like it's not, failure isn't an option, obviously.
In fact, I would say that when it gets to be quarter to nine, we are not gonna bring up a new topic that's gonna require any kind of action.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically what the board does.
Because we are not gonna go past nine o'clock unless it's-
We've got it close.
They do straighten it up.
Board trustees.
So what do we cut?
Did you, have you run this past Ryan at all?
Yeah, so I've, I've talked to Karen about it, who I believe has talked to Ryan about it. Obviously, I felt out how administration feels about this.
Well, I just am asking because he's in the process of re- rethinking some of the committee structures and how all of that works. So it seems like a really good time to get in on that conversation. That might be some information he would want as he's working through that process. And, and I know that meeting time is hard to get in here, so it might free up those Tuesday nights for some other committees that need to have their meetings and can't find time.
Well, I think this is a Planning Commission issue, and we'll deal with it at the Planning Commission. But thanks. Any further input? You're newbie on us.
Well, I mean, I, I run the remediation advisory team. We have once a month meetings and people bring projects that we review. And kind of do the same thing where if there's a project that has like a fast track or they can't make the deadline for that meeting that month, we might add a special meeting for it. And it, and it works fine that way.
Yeah, that was kind of my plan. And Miles, we talked about that.
Not all of us have the flexibility to throw on a meeting on our calendar.
Well, I would hope that we would tend to keep the second meeting as an option.
So we reserve the time, time on our calendar without-
Yes, but not necessarily meet? Is that doomed or we've got a problem? I mean-
I think for some of us, where we're trying to juggle our calendar.
Right.
I-
Myself included.
You know, if we don't, if we have a place, a hold on our calendar, that limits the options of scheduling something there, whether that's family time or business work or something like that. And if routinely that time is not utilized, that's not an efficient use of a calendar. So I'd be mindful of that. You know, I realize some of us have more flexibility in our calendars than others. I think a larger issue is in terms of, you know, for the last twenty-five years, Bath has been I, 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 the, the, the community, the township that has shown the largest growth out of anything nearby. And so-
That's correct.
So I, I think we've accommodated that in part because we can chew through the planning process. I a hundred percent am empathetic to, you know, staff time dedicated to this. I see this as an understaffing issue, not as a, you know, we're out of alignment with.
Right. Well, I agree with you in that regard.
You know, when we do meet, we typically use the full allocation of time to discuss things. And we've had some recent conversations about not ta- allowing things to go back to staff or administrative approval, like approving things with conditions. That's maybe some of us, maybe not all of us, have, have felt a little bit uncomfortable with.
Yep.
I have a hard time wondering if we move from two meetings a month that are typically full to one meeting a month. And we're gonna be adherents to a nine PM deadline, we're gonna have to make cuts, right? And so-
That is correct.
Where are those cuts gonna take place? My guess is that while we'll want to continue the, the discussion and think about things thoroughly for our community, we may be held to, we can't for the discusses, we have to pass it and, and let, you know.
I don't want that to happen.
So, I mean, that's, that's where I'm thinking with this. I'm totally fine with testing it out. But I, I, I just, again, I think this is a staffing problem that Township has long needed to fix in terms of building out additional staffing for the planning department that's congruent with the growth of our community. Not a, you know, a, a, a meeting structure issue.
Well, I understand your position, but I also want to be aware that we are gonna be working on the master plan and I don't want to do three meetings a month.
So, I mean, that, that's a whole different conversation we'd have down the road. It's like, can we effectively do a master plan? And, and how, how bare bones would that planning process be?
Correct.
In service of that, if we're at one, one meeting a month. Like, I'm, I'm thinking we're moving in the wrong direction in terms of meeting scope. Again, with all due respect in terms of the, the, the work and the labor of what the planning department takes. And, and again, it's, you know, you do a great meeting and I fully understand that it's a crap ton of work and it's not quality work that you would prefer to do, right?
Yeah, it's, that's the truth.
Are you envisioning that at our regularly scheduled first Tuesday of the month meeting, you would know or have a good idea if that special meeting needed to occur, like two weeks later?
I am sensitive to what Jason's saying, like everyone's time is valuable. And like, that's how the ZBA operates, right? Like Mark, you know, we get the, we get the emails, hey, like no ZBA needed this, but everyone's time is valuable. That staff obviously realizes that you guys are serving the community in a way even above what staff is because, you know, you're not, like it's, you're making a killing doing this. So, we would probably over time build a tempo where we were a month out knowing, hey. So I would say the meeting prior, I would say like the month prior, we would know what we're getting into.
More than reasonable for calendar purposes.
I, I think we're gonna find that as we move into the master plan, that that second meeting is gonna be utilized for master plan work.
Yeah, and but again, when we do bring on a consultant, which I'll get into that in my report from Planning Department later, but when we bring on a consultant, the best thing about consultants, they set very clear timelines. So we'll know like October, we're gonna need two meetings, November, we're gonna need two meetings.
Correct.
We can call that early on in the process.
But to your point, I would say that we would want to know at least a week, week in advance of whether the meeting was actually gonna happen.
Well, you'll have to know at least two weeks out if it's a developer for noticing reasons.
Well, that's true.
So-
Two weeks out is the most we could do.
Right.
The developer is the wild card. It's a scenario, or a wild card scenario is the one that Jason brought up, which is conversation went long, we need a special meeting.
Right. But we could decide at that meeting that yes, this is an issue, an issue we want to address further, we're gonna have that second meeting for the month. I think that's perfectly reasonable to do.
And the impetus is on the developer a little bit too here, but you guys don't, to Jason's point too and your point, you know, the emphasis isn't on the planning department or the Planning Commission to get this thing in the end zone for a developer. They should be bringing all the pieces. If, if all the pieces aren't there, which we've realized that sometimes they're not there, then, you know, the homework wasn't done. And so if a homework wasn't done, it can't be scored in this metaphor. So, um, so yeah, so if it gets tabled and it pushes them back a month, that's not on you guys, that's on the developer.
Go ahead, Mark.
I have, we've been updating ordinances and the like and going through that process along with the other things. If we put that into one meeting a month, again, I think it's going to get a little tight for conversation. And that's a concern, but if we want to try this, I know that going into the comprehensive plan, that's going to be very intense on time. Let alone subgroups talking.
I want to see how it works. My thought on the ordinance side is like, a lot of times when we're, because we're caught up in Bath Township, like I'm one person and I have some interns that help me. A lot of times when we're bringing you ordinances right now, and it's kind of the point that Commissioner Almeridge was saying, which is, we are sacrificing final work product. And that happened tonight where we could probably have waited two months to bring this to you and bring you a final report. But we did have a meeting on the schedule tonight, so we brought you what we were working on and it's in a pre-worked phase of its development. We got input from you and that helps us move forward. I'm hoping on the ordinance side, if we were able to press out more work, then we'll be bringing you things in a more complete phase than maybe you're used to seeing. But again, I don't think we'll fully know if that, I can't fully promise you that that's gonna be the case without trying it for a while and then seeing. So I don't want you guys to think like, oh, everything's gonna be so much better now. I, myself will have to see.
Mr. Sever, you got any comments?
No, I think we'll try it, see how it works.
So how do you, do you want to make a motion to this?
Yeah, we definitely need a motion if it's gonna be an action.
What schedule are we gonna set up?
Yeah, we definitely should probably have a motion.
You guys should probably review our bylaws and then make amendments to the bylaws to adjust that.
Well, we could do that. I don't know if we really want to go through the bylaws or we want to make this temporary, just as an experiment.
So put a time limit that in the year twenty-five, we will be going to one action meeting?
Yeah, one regular meeting.
Regular scheduled, yeah.
Regular meeting in-
To be held on the second Tuesday of the month at the regular time. And you could, you could caveat and say to a term ending in January twenty-twenty-six. And then in January twenty-twenty-six, to Commissioner Almeridge's point, if we feel like this is going well, at that point, you could-
amend the bylaws.
amend the bylaws, or choose not to amend the bylaws.
Right. Yeah, I prefer that concept.
Well, that puts a sunset clause on it for, to your point, Commissioner Almeridge, if, you know, this is becoming problematic.
Right. Well, it definitely should have a sunset clause, otherwise we won't be forced to review it, how effective it was.
Yeah.
So, can I get a motion?
So move with- So you can get conversation. I'll put the motion on the table that we go to one planning meeting per month through the calendar year twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. And the plan, the regular meeting should be on the second Tuesday at the regular time?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I, I don't think this is in alignment with how we should move. This should be a bylaw amendment. If you wanted to move this route, I would say let's cancel every fourth or second, whatever the, the-
The fourth Tuesday of the month.
Through the twenty-second, or twenty-twenty-four, January twenty-twenty-six.
Do you want to amend your motion to like that?
I do, friendly amendment, yeah.
I, I, I think that's cleaner than resetting the schedule.
I, I, I agree.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
I second with that amended motion.
Okay.
More discussion?
So we're canceling the second.
Want to read the motion?
On the fourth Tuesday.
So everybody understands?
Yeah, so the motion on the table is that through the calendar year of twenty-twenty-five, the Planning Commission is seeking to cancel the second standing meeting, the second regular meeting of the month, which occurs on the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
Is there a way for us to review that later?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we'll have to amend our calendar, our posting calendar.
Or we could just review it, yeah, okay. I just, I don't want to get caught up in comparing us to other-
No, I don't necessarily want to compare us.
But I know I go to these meetings and I think for the most part, I'm gonna say not all, for a lot of the stuff we've already worked through the last couple of years. So some of the big stuff's off the plate, but we do have a lot of stuff that's on the plate, like the solar stuff and stuff that don't want to get lost. And hopefully this might help the planning department work on that stuff maybe, but I just, I think we should be able to get through most of our meetings in that, in that time, I hope. So, I, I'd like feel comfortable trying it for a little while.
Okay. Any further discussion? Miles, are you comfortable with a voice vote or would you prefer a roll call?
However, whatever your pleasure is.
Well, let's do a roll call. There's no dispute above.
All right. So I'll show you on the minutes after the meeting how to set up a roll call vote because it's different, but, um, okay. Vice Chair Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Crainer?
Yes.
Chair Reich?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sever?
Yes.
Commissioner Almeridge? No. Commissioner Colter?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing wrong with that.
Well, Jason likes a full calendar. He just said it.
All right, well, I appreciate it.
It's worth a try.
On the staff side, I think, and we'll, we'll do our best to utilize the time efficiently.
Okay, let's do department, department updates, Miles?
Yeah, so with the, using the time efficiently, good segue into some department updates, I'll get into all that. I am gonna pause and I want to take the time to introduce our new planning intern. His name is Robert. He goes by Bobby. Bobby, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Bobby Foster.
Please tell us about yourself.
Well, I'm Bobby Foster. I'm a senior at Michigan State in urban planning. I'm actually from DeWitt, so I've spent a lot of time in Bath. And this is my first internship, so this is all kind of a new experience for me.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You got any special interests?
Sure.
No, I mean as far as planning goes.
Oh, no, not really. Economic development has been something that's interested me, but this is kind of all new to me. This is, just trying to get experience.
Good. Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Glad you made the cut.
Yeah, I would just say so far Bobby's been great. Shows a real willingness to like get right involved and already, you know, put in some hours doing data entry, helping us with some of our land use stuff. And yeah, like we're excited to have him and we appreciate all of our interns and anything we can do to further their careers, you know, a definite bonus for us as well. So, yeah. Okay, um, if everyone's cool, no more questions, department updates. Other than that is, we, I wanted to announce now that I can formally announce it, the MISTA Planning Grant that we sought for fifteen, or fifty thousand dollars was, has been awarded and then I've accepted the grant. With department and professionalization of the department, an area that I've been trying to explore more and more is the grant writing aspect of planning. I think it's been wholly underutilized by Bath Township for just decades now. And I'm by no means a professional grant writer, but this is the third grant that I've grown in my time here. When I worked at Genesee County Parks, I worked under a really, really talented grant writer and I saw what that was able to do for Genesee County Parks. And I think we can do more of that in Bath. It's, it, it is, and I hate to bring it back to, it is a time thing though. I know like when Karen was brought on in Bath Township, I think her, her original title was like grant writer and social media, some word for employee, but-
Liaison.
Liaison, coordinator, whatever.
Coordinator.
But, um, that quickly morphed into her just being administrative assistant. And they just removed it. They go, you know, you don't have time for this. Like we have like bills we need to take in and the day-to-day stuff that we're statutory required to do, like no, obviously you can't write grants here in Bath Township. We don't have time for that. And so, and then Taylor was brought on under Karen and the similar, I think her title again included the word grant somewhere in it and then quickly was made Karen's deputy administrator because they're just way overloaded. And so I, to Jason's point, I mean, I don't think he's wrong at all and about staffing issues. The township has gone like this and the planning department has had one planner forever. So it doesn't at all reflect the growth. I do think East Lansing, in my opinion, and Meridian are able to do the things they do, which is much because of the resources that they have. But you have to, I try to be realistic too and look at things from a business perspective, which isn't always easy or correct to do with government, but you know, Meridian has an operating budget about five times the budget that Bath Township does and I don't even know where East Lansing is at by- You know, Veridian has an operating budget about five times the budget that Bath Township does and I don't even know where East Lansing is at, but I'm assuming it's much higher. And so, you know, priorities have to be made. Kate Hur here is at the board meeting all the time. Every department wants something. Right? DPW wants this, police wants that, fire wants a new truck. I think even medical services or something going on there that we have to figure out soon. And none of these dollar amounts are even close to low. And I think that's why, at least on my side, I've been pushing with that, you know, business economic development mindset. Like every fee that's currently charged by the township needs to be explored. I don't care if it's what the senior center is charging. Or what the cemetery fee is, like if it's a, or what the pedo's permit is, like I'm sure that hasn't gone up in thirty-five years. But everything needs to be explored, everything needs to be on the table, in my opinion. Because department capacity just can't stay where it's at for all of these departments and expect any kind of reasonable. Ability to even meet statutory requirements. I don't know how they were even meeting FOIA deadlines prior to us digitizing a lot of this information. I, and I think that the answer to that is they weren't meeting FOIA deadlines and they were just requesting multiple extensions. So it's concerning. Other things going on in the department, just so everyone's aware, is we are keeping in touch with the road commission. With the Chandler corridor improvement. I'll say engineering and design, there's some really tough decisions that are going to be, have to made, be made soon. We have ten million dollars from the state and we have a twelve to thirteen million dollar project. And so where is that three million dollars coming from? There's multiple agencies involved and none of them want to, including us, spend more money. So somebody has to figure something out. So that can come in the form of budget or, you know, project scope being limited. And in the form of other revenue being brought to the table. I guess what I would expect is those two aspects of getting the budget aligned to meet somewhere in the middle. But um, we do anticipate the road commission to put up a fight. And so we'll see how that all works out. It might even include us going back to the state. To have them mediate how they think the money should be divided out. So, not looking forward to that because the road commission staff and Bath Township staff have always played really well together. And um, I think there might be elements. You know, within boards of various bodies, not necessarily the township board, but maybe in the road commission board. Or maybe even, you know, the members of MDOT that cause strife and then that sucks for the employees that have to have. To execute what the will of the board would be. But we'll see, everything could work out, hopefully, fingers crossed. Other items, I don't know, it was brought up last time, I don't know if everyone saw, but that house that was on Park Lake Road has been. Demilled and the utilities have been capped. They did find some interesting stuff in the ground over there as is to be expected. It looks like the sewage originally from that house was just going into the lake. That was one of the big reasons, I mean, you probably know this better than most, working at Eagle, but um. It was one of the reasons why the sewer ordinances around the state of Michigan, or you're allowed to legally require people to tap into sewer. Especially around the lake communities, they would put in a lot of these sewer lines and require people to tap in. Because there were so many cottage communities in the state of Michigan where the sewage was dumping right into the bodies of water. And I think health departments now, when they're doing their septic field analysis, when houses. The transaction of selling a house, you have to get the septic field inspected upon sale now in a lot of communities, that's a requirement. I don't necessarily know if it's one in Clayton County, but they'll still find houses go on the market. And just have like a line going into like a drain or something. So it still comes up even today. We've been slow on the residential permit side. That's been a little concerning for me on a local level. I, I'm trying to give it the benefit of the doubt that the last two winters prior to this, we didn't have a very heavy winter. So maybe us having this real intense winter is just kind of stifled. Construction across the township, that could totally be it. I'm hoping it's not the latter, which would be. Interest rates and just overall cost of living is finally starting to catch up and people just don't have as much disposable income. And we're going to have a lower. A lower. Activity year for investment and physical investment in structures across the township. So, it remains to be seen. It could be either, honestly, it could be a combination of the two. So I think this month so far, like we'll since the beginning of the year, we've maybe done. Four, five permits, which last year we were already at like fifteen at this point. And I, I'm specifically meaning permits for new structures coming online. Obviously, we're doing all kinds of permits. Yeah, that's kind of where things sit in the department.
Thank you, Miles. Kate, you've got anything you'd like to share with us?
Highlights from the last board trustees meeting? I just had it, sorry. Like it must have gotten shuffled in with my papers. Just have to go off the top of my head, I guess. Sorry. Miles presented that he had been awarded his grant. And we had continued discussion on the Park Lake Trail. And we took some action to formally engage, formally engage with Oak Island. To explore the process of using their parking lot at that end of the Park Lake Trail as. The actual trail parking to move that forward. What else? The process for interviewing for police chief has begun and that is continuing. And. I think. Formally adopted the fee structure that we had talked about at multiple meetings here and multiple meetings there. I think that's gone completely through the process. And I don't know, I had my agenda and I had my notes and I don't know where I, what I did with it.
Do you want me to?
In the last ten minutes. What's that?
I, I think you also authorized them to explore a easement with Oak Island for the trail.
Yeah.
Their property.
The board of trustees, um, yeah, to explore it. I guess we authorized Karen to. Reach out to them to start that process. Trust, trustee Kotke is really pushing the Park Lake Trail, not a surprise to any of us. So that's the action that we took on that. Oh, that's what I wanted to talk about. I don't know what I did with that paper. I just got it. The DNR trust fund grant, so the board of trustees had directed the staff. To start the process of putting together an application for a DNR trust fund grant or other grants. Speaking of grants, well, you were talking about that earlier, with the intent of being. Completing the projects that we had talked about here in the Park Lake area, so.
It was like three different grants.
Yeah, it was the Wiswasser Park Drainage Grant, the boat launch and the accessible kayak grant. The sport court. Sidewalks around the north end of the lake as well as making the improvements to the Park Lake Trail. So, as, I guess, I saw it sort of as a way of compromising between. The impetus to get something going on the trail. From the Park Lake friends and others, as well as the township's desire to improve safety. And some of the infrastructure there around the lake, especially the sidewalks, is could we. Kind of put together this big improvement plan. And so the staff started looking into that and realized that. The trust fund grant was maybe not going to be quite as straightforward as it was initially presented to us, the process, as being. And it was discussed to, instead of trying to get it. An application in for twenty-twenty-five, that it would be much. Probably more successful if there was time to get everything in place to apply twenty-twenty-six. And so that's the direction that we are headed. I'm excited about the possibility of getting some grant money to try and do some of those things. But I also think, it's my opinion, that the board of trustees needs to support that with some grant writing staff. Consultant or whatever it is. I don't, I think that that's way too big of a project. After just writing the grant for the museum, I think my husband and I had easily forty hours. Into completing that grant process. And I mean, we're volunteers and that's our own time. But in the staff type situation, you would have to have a different setup in place, I think, to make that happen successfully. And we want it to be successful. Who wants to put all that time into writing a grant and then not get it? That's worst case scenario. That's worse than not even writing the grant.
It makes you not want to ever do it again.
Right. So if you have good vibes to send to the state of Michigan for the museum grant, I do it like every day. Just because it is that feeling of we put so much time and passion and effort. Into getting this done and, and then to get denied, really would be disheartening. And I feel the same at the township. So I think that is where we probably spent the majority of our time actually was discussing. We spent a lot of time discussing the Park Lake Corridor and possible improvements. Um, there was, uh, the superintendent has started a contract to do an official fire department assessment. I think part of the issues, again, with growth of the township and not keeping up with things over time is. Are questions like have, have the staffing numbers kept up to what's realistic? How many staff do we need? Is the equipment at the level that it should be for the size of the department and the needs of the department? Just sort of a, an overall assessment and a report to bring back to the board of trustees about. The current situation and so we can make some recommendations going forward. But that process has started as well. Not officially, I got it through email, but it wasn't mentioned at the board of trustees meeting. That the deputy fire chief slash code enforcement officer. Slash fire marshal has taken a job as the chief, fire chief for the city of St. John's.
Kind of a big switch up for us on the planning side, since we work so closely on it with the code enforcement side.
That is.
So, yeah, we'll see what happens. I know we're in the thick of the police chief right now, so I imagine that will be up next.
Okay, commissioners, anybody got comments they'd like to share with us? Well, does everybody want to go home then?
I want to go home, but I just want to think all those that, we sit, we sit at these tables every day. Sometimes I'm thinking in the back of my mind what I'm going to say and then somebody will say it. And then, then I think, well, that wasn't received very well. And then somebody will say something else on the other side and I'll say that wasn't received very well, but. Both those things, I received my own ad very well and appreciated that. All those people that said all those things did indeed say those things, so I appreciate. All, all those opinions that I hear and hear every time I come to a meeting and how it helps me grow and understand my community. That I thought I understood twenty years ago, I'm understanding even better now. Realizing the more I know, the more I don't know. So I, I appreciate that from all, all you guys very much. And those that work behind the scenes, of course, and answer our phones here at the township. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
One other thing I thought of is Bath Fest has been added to the calendar for the first weekend in August. So this is a revamp, a revamp of Bath Days. This, it's going to be called Bath Fest going forward, so. Keep an out, keep an eye out for that.
And that's through a subcommittee through that township board, correct?
Through the recreation. The recreation committee, yes, is spearheading that.
So anything to do with that might be taken to that committee, to the recreation committee?
Anything else? Anybody got anything else? I have one thing real quick, just Miles brought up grants and, you know, a good grant writer can pay for themselves. In one project, honestly. So I mean, I think that's a huge thing. Working with Eagle, I do work with grants. And, you know, they're not always awarded how you might think they'd be awarded. So I think that's a key thing to keep in mind and when you write grants, I think contacting the people. Getting a hold of the right people and asking them questions, getting as much information from them as you can. So that you're going down the right road and answering the questions the right way. Sometimes they can't divulge too much info, but. If you're nice, they'll give you some guidance, so.
Creating that network is important. And that's one thing with the grants, I showed them, I remind you, is. What I'm trying to do here is provide that township proof of product and say like, this can be done. And then the Commissioner Almeridge is pointing, if the planning department is able to. Receive the three hundred thousand dollars I've applied for this year. Then I'm hoping that I'll be able to bring that argument like, guys, if you think what you could do if there was two of you. You know, and hopefully. That group of product will provide that validity to my argument of staff can be efficient and get things done that are important.
And another side note on that, a lot of these grants take into account. My EJ screen or environmental justice isn't going to help us much. We have a very low score.
We have to be selective about the grants we choose because we don't score super high in some of these categories.
Yeah, that in effect may screen us out of some grants, but anyway. Thank you. Anything else? George, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd love to make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose?